Hello. James, I think I just allowed you to record.
Thank you. Emily, I'm James Murray from Marblehead TV. Just want to introduce myself to you.
Oh, hi. Nice to meet you.
How are you? So I usually cover the meetings, but I usually cover the meetings.
Great.
We edit together highlights, but normally we would do the whole meeting on our channel.
Right.
But now I just do like a five to seven minute kind of headline.
Oh, got it. Okay.
Okay. Nice to meet you. Congratulations.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome. I'll leave you alone. Bye.
No, it's okay.
First school committee meeting.
Woo. I need some better lighting. I'm in the shade.
Me too. Better artwork.
No. Put up.
All right, I'm just gonna put me on for a minute.
Hello, Emily. Hi, Michelle.
Hello. I thought for a minute my computer was broken. It was so quiet. Nobody was there. There was no background noise.
Hey, Chris.
Thank you. Hi, James.
I'm here.
How are you?
I'm wonderful. It's a beautiful day today.
Oh, my God, it's gorgeous.
Yeah.
I had to turn my video off because my cat keeps walking across the screen.
I love your cat.
That's the best part of Zoom.
It really is. Well, you might see his head pop up. He's sleeping right here next to the computer.
David, is that a virtual background?
You're muted, David.
No, that's the real deal. There's no realities about that. Come, come. Show everybody that you're here. No, come over here. Oh, no. Over here. Come on. Show everybody. Come over.
Come on, we like visitors.
It's not gonna show. We went to the groomer today. Looks all nice.
We've got a dog and a cat.
Bill, do you need to screen share at all? Or you want me to let you co-host?
Well, that'd be great, just in case we need to look at a couple of documents.
Hey, buddy. How you doing?
Oh, for heaven's sakes.
Michelle, as it gets warmer, I'm getting more jealous of your background of the pool.
Oh, it was bad today. I was at the office all day. My brother's sending me pictures of him swimming with his kids. I'm like, great, thanks.
I had to sew together a bouncy house so the kids could go in the water slides. You're ahead of me.
Bird, what are you doing?
What are you doing? Yeah, everybody's got their pets today. Emily's cat's here, too. There was a while where Tower had a running tally of how many pets had been met in various Zoom classes.
I like it. Our weekly edit meetings always have time for pets, to introduce pets, and for small children to come in and say hello.
Perfect. I always worry that when I'm yelling at my children, my mute isn't actually on.
Had a couple of those moments.
If anybody wants to make public comment, if you want to add your name over into the chat, when we get to that part, I will call on you. All right, there's a few people still trickling in a little bit, but I think it's, 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 everybody's here. So I will call the meeting to order at 7:05 PM. Welcome, everyone. Our first agenda item today is committee organization and the election of the officers. So Bill had put together a short memo that, you know, that stating the policy which the school committee will elect its membership, a chair, vice chair, and secretary, all of whom hold their offices for the term of one year or until a successor is elected. So at this point, I will call for nominations for the chairman. Megan?
Um, I nominate Sarah Gold for the position of chairman. I think when I nominated Sarah last year, I noted her calm and thoughtful approach. And I think she definitely has followed through on that. I think she's also fair and inclusive and has really helped us along with Bill and Michelle and Eric to get us on much more stable ground from where we were. And I would like to see her continue moving us forward in that way.
Thanks, Megan.
I'll second that motion and nomination as well. I think Sarah's done a great job coming into this position and taking on the role and working with Bill as an interim superintendent and has readily been available. As chairman, need to be more than other committee members, and it's a lot of responsibility. And I hope you'll accept the opportunity to take it on for another year.
Thanks, guys. I'm honored. So we have a motion and a second. Does anybody else have anything that they would like to add before we call for a vote? All right, I will call for a vote and I will call Emily's, Emily Barron, our newest member, is up top with me. So I'll call for a roll call and I'll call Emily first. Uh, you're muted, Emily.
Sorry, newbie. Um, yes.
Thanks. Megan Taylor?
Yes.
David Harris? You're also muted, David.
Yes.
Sarah Fox?
Yes.
All right, motion carries five to zero. Thank you all. I appreciate it and I hope to continue to lead in a, in a fair way. So I will next call for nomination for the vice chairman.
Make a motion to nominate Megan Taylor as vice chair.
I believe I can second that motion in this case. I think Megan has been really helpful behind the scenes. You know, she's, I can ping ideas off of her and, you know, she's there to kind of help keep me grounded at times and walk things through. So I've really appreciated her vice chairmanship this year.
She did just drop off the meeting.
She is.
Sorry. Internet has been a little funky all day. Um, all right, so we had a motion for Megan.
And a second?
Yes, as vice chairman. So I will call, roll call now. Emily Barron?
Yes.
Megan Taylor?
Yes.
David Harris?
Yes.
Sarah Fox?
Yes.
Sarah Gold, yes. So that motion carries five to zero.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
And if I might, before you move on, I know this is totally unexpected, but I actually would like to, despite my grievance with being put onto secretaries last year, I did enjoy it and would like to do it again.
All right. I thought that you were going to be very happy to just hand it right over to the next newbie.
No, I, I like taking the minutes and, and the few times that Lisa can't.
All right, well, um, Emily, I think you're probably okay with that.
Yeah, totally.
All right, then I will, I believe I can do this. I motion to nominate Sarah Fox as the secretary.
Second.
All right. Thank you, Sarah. Anybody else have anything to say? Okay, Emily Barron?
Yes.
Sarah Gold, yes. Megan Taylor?
Yes.
David Harris?
Yes.
And Sarah Fox?
Yes.
Great. Motion carries five to zero. All right, thanks, everyone. That moves us on to commendations. And Bill, did you want? Sarah Fox, did you have something that you wanted to say? Or you have a commendation?
If Bill wants to go first, if he has one, most certainly he can go first.
Okay. Bill, did you want to do the commendations for the retiree resignation or recognition?
Sure, I'd be happy, I'd be happy to.
Thanks. Go right ahead.
So it's a pleasure to, to just say thank you, to say congratulations to our seven professional staff retirees this year. And we also have three of our support staff retiring as well. I'd like to just tell you who they are and what their position was and how many years that they've dedicated to the children of the Marblehead Public Schools. So first is Susan Bonaponi. Susan is a special education teacher at the Vets Middle School. And Susan is retiring after serving for 19 years. Hold on a second. Be with me. Okay, thank you. Next is Kathy Castaldi. Kathy is finishing her career as a special education teacher at the high school. And Kathy's retiring from the Marblehead Public Schools after serving the district and our students' families for 17 years. Etsy Gay, kindergarten teacher at Everett, is retiring with 19 years of service to the students of Marblehead. Joan Geary, Joan Geary taught chemistry at the high school for 15 years. Joan actually retired at the end of January. And, but we once again wish her well in her retirement. Melissa Humphrey, a longtime and very dedicated, very committed teacher, social studies teacher at the high school. Melissa's retiring after 26 years of service. Another kindergarten teacher from the Everett School, Brenda Peroni. Brenda has been with us for the last 19 years, and we wish her well in retirement also. And then our last professional staff member, Steve Venezia. Steve is a social studies teacher at the high school and is retiring after 19 years of service with the Marblehead Public Schools. We wish them the best of good health and good fortune as they begin their retirement careers. As I told them in an earlier email, it's a wonderful thing. So we hope they enjoy it. Also retiring, some support staff members, two of our paraprofessionals. Marilyn Jones Tindido, Marilyn is retiring after 15 years of service to the students of Marblehead. Joanie Younger, who is a paraprofessional as well, is retiring after four years of service. And then Jeannie Rumbach is one of our twos. And she's retiring after 22 years of service to the students of the Marblehead Public Schools. So we wish Jeannie and Joanie and Marilyn the best of good wishes and health as they begin their retirement years as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill, and absolutely best of luck to all those retirees. Sarah, you have your hand up, so I will let you go.
Um, I wanted to start off by giving accommodation to all of our teachers, our students, and parents who acted as stand-in teachers throughout the year. The rest of the year this year, it was the year that none of us saw coming. And I think that everyone should be committed on a team effort. Our administrators, most definitely as well. But, but for me, most importantly, I wanted to commend Jen Schaffner. Jen has served on the school committee for several years, after a decade as a parent volunteer advocating for our students. She came to every meeting fully prepared, ready to engage in discussion and ask well-thought-out questions. I had the pleasure to co-chair the superintendent search committee this past year with Jen. And we've all heard firsthand from our superintendent Bill, the professional consultants, the community, as well as all the participants on the search committee, how well-run the process was. Our consultants commented it was the biggest turnout they had seen in their professional focus group. And I attribute that completely to Jen's impeccable organizational skills and communication outreach plan. Jen's focus was always on student achievement. If I am able to take her lead and focus the same way, and using student achievement as a constant guiding principle during my tenure as a school committee member, then I will be proud. Jen also made it a point to always recognize the staff, community volunteers, and volunteers for their positive contributions to our school system. She nominated both the magic hat and the boosters for statewide recognition for their constant support of our district and students. Jen knew the importance of recognizing our staff, students, and volunteers in the community for their good deeds. And for that, I commend her.
I was needed now. Thank you, Sarah. I will jump in and I just want to commend Bill. This is our last official meeting with Bill at the helm. Our next sets of meetings over the summer will have our new Dr. John Bucky taking over. But Bill, I just wanted to really thank you for, for joining us this year and for taking on Marblehead and for all of the help that you provided and all of the guidance. You've been, you've, you've been amazing to work with. You know, I've learned a lot from you. You've certainly provided guidance and, and, you know, direction for me when I've been confused and conflicted. You know, the, the, the way that you've approached the budget and everything that you've done with it and how you've helped us in hiring. It's been nothing short of amazing. And I just am incredibly grateful for everything you've done for us this year. And you will be very, very missed. You know, we're all excited for John to take over, but you will be missed greatly. So I, I just appreciate everything you've done for us. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Sarah. It's been a pleasure.
Absolutely, Sarah. I mean, I could go on how amazing Bill is for hours. But Bill, thank you so much for everything, everything you've done for us.
Megan, can you hold on one second? I just want to bring my wife in so she can. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And, and I'll just add out, you know, obviously the, all that he's done as superintendent, there was another small piece of his responsibility that was called the school building project. You know, Bill came in here, the project had already been going on for three years, jumped in, was fully engaged, worked, worked with all of our consultants, worked with Jason Silva, worked with the neighbors and citizens that had comments and concerns. And, I mean, Bill, obviously you've had that experience before, but it was like you had been with the building project since it started. So there were all the responsibilities that came with being an interim superintendent in COVID-19. But we have this little project, you know, with the school project for $53 million. And you've been at all the meetings, the planning board meetings, the additional Thursday night meetings. And really appreciate your participation, guidance, and all of your insight that you've been able to offer to that process as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you, David.
Can I say something real quick?
Absolutely.
So I just want to continue what everybody is saying and how great it's been to have you here. And then also, you were so great meeting with the central council, with all the presidents of the PTO, and continuously updating us on what was going on and listening to us and helping with us in that way, too. So I appreciate all of that. And on the building committee, it'll be sad to see you go. So thank you so much, Bill.
Thank you, Emily.
There any other commendations?
I think you were saying, we
I think we all, we all appreciate everything you've done here. I mostly appreciate how much you love that we constantly keep thanking you. I'm just kidding, because Bill hates that we keep doing this.
Thanks, Sarah. You're right.
And I'll just take one last moment to also say thank you to the teachers and all of the staffing at the schools. You know, I'll, I'll put the parents and the children in there for sure, because, you know, everyone has worked incredibly hard to make it through these last three months. But I, you know, as I said in the closing exercises for, for my, in my role at the Tower School, our head of school mentioned how, you know, none of the teachers and staff signed up. This is not what they sign their contracts to do. And yet, when everything went wrong, they stepped up and they kept with it. And it was about the kids and, and moving the children forward. And, you know, I know that our staff has done that same thing. And I know that, you know, they've worked harder than they've ever worked. And that's, that says a lot, because teachers work really hard to begin with. And, you know, I know there was quite a few texts I got about ugly cries as people were going through the parades today. So teachers rest up and have a great summer, and we'll see you in the fall. Thank you. Any other commendations out there? All right, that will move us on to Dan Howell's. Dan?
Oh, actually, Sarah, if I can, really quick, I just want to thank Todd and the custodians at the high school. Tuesday, they did an amazing job on keeping up with everything for the elections. And I saw Todd there at seven oh five in the morning. And the custodians were wiping everything down between every voter. And they really helped to make that a safe process and went above and beyond. So thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Absolutely. All right, Dan, take it away. One last update.
All right, yeah. So first of all, today is the last official day of school for all students. And today was also meant to be the virtual eighth grade MVMS Moving On ceremony. There unfortunately was a technical difficulty, so it has been pushed off to tomorrow night. But nonetheless, I wanted to congratulate all of the eighth graders at MVMS Charter and Tower for moving on. And on behalf of MHS, I'd like to welcome them. And we look forward to seeing them as soon as possible. So when I was looking back on the year, I found it kind of hard to think past our quarantine and remember, you know, the fall, even though it wasn't actually that long ago. But I, you know, I did, and I think it's, it's still incredible how much we were able to achieve in such a short amount of time. So we had a very successful fall season. Our annual pep rally was great. And the football and powder puff teams both won their respective Thanksgiving Day games. Also, in the fall, a number of MHS students competed in the statewide cross-country meet. In the winter, the swim team won their fifteenth consecutive NEC championship. And the boys ski team also took home their state title for the year. The drama club's production of Peter Wendy moved on to the semifinal round of the MTD Drama Fest, Drama Festival. And MHS also held their second annual cultural feast, which was definitely a great, an impactful event for the school. And on March 13th, we had the Great Annual Senior Show, which turned out to be the same day, the same night that school was canceled for the first time. So we still managed, many of us still managed to be together that night, moving into the quarantine. And finally, on June 5th, was the high school virtual graduation, which I think was definitely the best that it could have been considering the circumstances. So moving forward, it's, it's an unsure time. We are unsure where we will be, you know, next fall, next spring even. But I think I can speak for a number of, or many MHS students when I say that I feel optimistic about next year in moving forward past all of this, getting back into school. And I'm definitely really looking forward to being back in the classroom. Yeah, I think it will, this will, obviously, this is, this is history. We are living, living in history. And I think that we will all look at it like that once it is over.
Thank you, Dan. I really appreciate that you backed us all the way up, because you're totally right. It's really hard to remember past three months ago. And, and there were some really great things that went on in our schools before that. So, you know, I really appreciate always your thoughtful and prepared statements, keeping us up to date on what's going on at the school level. I am hoping that you'll be joining us next year again, because it's your senior year, right?
Yes, yeah.
Right, big time. So, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Yeah, I just.
Go ahead, Sarah.
Dan, I just want to thank you. You never cease to amaze me how well-prepared you are for our meetings, how well-spoken you are, how positive you are in the information you share with us that fills us in on exactly what's going on at the high school. And I, it makes me think about during the, the process of selecting a superintendent, one of the candidates talked about the idea of what we want a portrait of our graduates to be. And I think that even though you aren't a graduate this year, you really exemplify what we're looking for in our students. And I, I'm, I'm just impressed with you every, every meeting, what you show up and contribute. And I'm sure your parents are very proud of you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. That means a lot. And, you know, next year, I, if you will be willing to have me, I would definitely love to come back and do it again.
Wonderful. So glad.
Thank you, Ms. Todd.
So moved.
Sarah Gold, if I could, I just, Dan, I think you've been fantastic all year. As Sarah said, you truly are a role model for our Marblehead High School student body. You know, I echo everything that Sarah said, but it's been, it's been a real pleasure having you at our meetings and your contribution to this committee on a regular basis has been very much appreciated. And I wish you the very best of luck next year.
Thank you, you too. It's, it's been a pleasure working with you as well.
All right. Thank you very much, Dan. Have a great summer.
Thank you.
We'll see you in the fall.
Yes. Thank you.
All right, that leads us to public comment. I, I, there was a list going before my video lagged out, so I have, I have three people's names written down. If there's anybody else who would like to make public comment, just put your name and address in the chat function, and I will call on you. I know I had Katie Martin first up.
Thank you, Sarah. Catherine Martin, 29 West Shore Drive. I will be very brief. I just wanted to take a minute and thank Jen Schaffner for her many years of service, not only on the school committee, but as a tireless volunteer in our district. So it's no secret that Jen and I always, didn't always see eye to eye. But regardless of policy disagreements, Jen would always pick up the phone and call you and talk to you. She would always look you in the eye and have a conversation with you. She would listen to you. She would give you her opinion. And she would walk away, and it was done. And the next time you saw her, you could have a completely different conversation with her. She didn't hold grudges. She just was a consummate professional, always. She showed up to meetings prepared. She was an extremely hard worker. And it was always a pleasure to work with her. This, as Sarah Fox said, that superintendent search was run as well as any professional search committee that I had ever been on. This, the school district relies on volunteers. And Jen had been a volunteer for years before she was on the school committee, and she understood that. When I first joined the building committee, Jen actually took time to go over and, and talk to me about some of the different nuances and history of all the different building projects in town. Village Glover High School, in some way, she was involved with them, whether it was the getting the, the warrant passed or whether it was on the committee or whether it was just as an advocate. She had been involved with all of those schools. And once again, she had everyone at her house the Sunday night before town meeting prepping for this year, for last year's warrant article. So Jen, you know, was a tireless volunteer for that. She also advocated time and time again for our teachers, our students, and staff. Nobody knew that the last meeting that she was at was going to be her last meeting. But during that meeting, she advocated for our administrators' cola. She advocated for our students' free lunch through June, if not throughout the summer. And she advocated for a reentry plan and some sort of working dialogue with our community, because that's who she was. And I just want to thank her for her service, because I, you all do a job that, you know, you all know firsthand is tremendously difficult. So I also didn't know that tonight was Bill's last night, but I would like to thank him, too. And many of the things I just said about Jen, I actually think Bill shares many of those same traits. They're just great professional leadership traits. Bill also, like Jen, would pick up the phone when you call him and talk to you and talk things through, no matter what side of a policy he was on. So I just think that, you know, it's kind of sad, June, because we're losing, losing two really great people in our district. So thanks to both of them. I really appreciate both of your service.
Thank you, Katie. I also had Joan Miller on my list for public comment.
Yeah, hi, Joan Miller, 34 Nogus Ave. I'm going to just take it back to Bill for one minute. On behalf of the Marblehead Education Association, we just want to thank you, Bill, for your incredibly steady leadership this year. You know, your, your experience and your knowledge has gotten us through this truly unprecedented year. I know I'm going to miss you and I, you know, I'm going to miss your, your leadership and everything you've done for us. You know, I have your phone number, though, so I'm glad I can pick, pick up the phone at any time. So I, you know, I wish you the best this summer. I hope you get out onto the golf course a lot, and thank you.
Thank you, Joan.
Tony might need to change his phone number, because we all have it.
Cindy Lowen.
Okay, so first of all, I want to say welcome to Emily Barron. And welcome back, Sarah Gold. And I look forward to working with the whole team. And I wish you guys the best with this new group, as well as with John Buckley. I incredibly will be missing Bill. I unfortunately don't have his number, so I'm wondering if he will give it to me tonight. But you have been very even keeled throughout this whole year. And I just think that what you've done in terms of putting things back together with the school committee, filling up central administration, and just turning things on a positive side has been really great for our district. I wish you were going to be here two years. This isn't anything about Dr. Buckley. It's more about wishing that you would just stay with us, because you're so good, and I love your humor. And thank you so much, and I wish you the best, and I wish the school committee the best. And I look forward to working with you guys in my capacity as CPAC and Marblehead Racial Justice Team and anything else that I might decide to endeavor around here. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. All right, no one else has put their name in for public comments, so I believe that we can move forward at this point. That will move us on to our minutes. We have minutes for April 2nd, April 13th, and April 16th. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes for April 2nd, 2020, April 13th, 2020, and April 16th, 2020?
So moved.
David moved?
Second.
Sarah, second?
Second.
Did anybody have any additions to add for those or any, any comments to make?
No.
All right. All right, I will call for a roll call. Emily Barron?
Yes.
Sarah Gold, yes. Megan Taylor?
Yes.
David Harris?
Yes.
Sarah Fox? All right, Sarah, that was a yes, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. The motion carries five to zero. All right, thanks, guys. Bill, that leads us on to your final superintendent report. And you are going to give an update on school reopening plans.
I am. Thank you, Sarah, and good evening, everyone. So we've been talking about the planning process for reopening schools in the fall. It's been a little frustrating, because we're waiting for the fall reopening plan from DESI to come out. We're expecting it. We were expecting it middle of the week. We're now expecting it hopefully sometime tomorrow, perhaps sometime afternoon. And so a couple of weeks ago, the commissioner indicated to superintendents, or about three or four weeks ago, that the plan that DESI was putting together would be prescriptive in nature, meaning that the expectation would be that this is the plan that school districts would follow. So we really didn't want to get too far ahead of ourselves in terms of the planning. We didn't want to, you know, have to move, move backwards, perhaps, and start over again. So for tonight, and, and, you know, it's, there's no big announcement here, but what I've put together for you, and I'll just kind of spend a minute or two, well, you know, that's what I say every time, just going to spend a little bit going through the document I'll put up to share with everyone. But the document that I prepared is, is really meant to be a, a general structure of what the planning process might be for, for the Marblehead Public Schools in planning for reopening. I've done a lot of research, and I've been looking at a lot of different information. I finally found some information from the Rhode Island Department of Education, which, which their document really focused on the planning process versus the plan. We know the plan in large part is coming. So, so let me just share. I'll pull that up. Put my glasses on. So I had a chance to meet with Dr. Buckley earlier this week. We spent considerable amount of time together Monday and some additional time on Tuesday. Part of that time was spent talking about this, this process in general. And the last couple of days have been working on putting it in writing. But in terms of the overall planning process, there should be a school reopening committee that really is the oversight committee of this process. The superintendent of schools would lead, you know, would be the chair of this group or a co-chair. John, you know, ultimately can make that decision. But, you know, it suggested the committee would be responsible for detailing the Marblehead Public School protocols, procedures, academic, social, emotional, mental health, and operational needs that are in line with DESI's school reopening plan. This would be a fairly large and broad-represented group of the school community. So I've listed for this, for the purpose of this presentation. So I've listed for this, for the purpose of this presentation, in addition to the superintendent, what the membership of this school reopening committee would look like. It would include the central office administrators, principals, a nurse leader, the Marblehead Education Association president, the school committee chair or, or her designee. We would look to have some parent representation. Of course, professional staff representation that, that is, consists of all of our different learning and content areas, certainly by grade level. What this committee would be considering and kind of topics it would focus on. You know, they would, they would determine, once DESI plan is out and there's been a chance to review it, determine necessary subcommittees, working groups that will, that will really get into the nitty gritty of planning of the Marblehead Plan and assign those responsibilities, develop a regular meeting. It's been suggested that there be a technology audit. And, and what that means is, and for the most part, this is in place. But, you know, the identification of all of the different devices that we have in the district. So that as a planning for further remote learning or in-school support, you know, we'll know what equipment we have and perhaps additional equipment that will be needed. You know, look at the need for possible outside support and assistance for certain areas of reopening. A, an important piece will be surveying families to assess their plans for reopening. We know that, I believe whatever the plan is, we will have some families that will decide to, for many reasons, not to send their students to school if that's part of the plan, the physical plan, at least for a while. And then to assess staffing needs and determine reassignments as may be needed. We, the group, the district will also be surveying staff to understand. You know, perhaps explore opportunities for a wider use of online platforms, perhaps, you know, consistent. This is, this is a group that should identify both of, all of our in-school programming and services that will be available. Either, you know, what are, what all of our students of learning progress and perhaps loss through segments of remote learning and the need for providing extended learning and programming. Identify intervention programs and services that will be available to our students. You know, and that also includes helping partnerships with as well. Part of the plan should be, you know, developing a plan for possible, possible second wave of COVID-19, which may result in full school closure again. And then also identify possible summer and pre-opening of school staff development needs. I just said I wasn't going to go through every bullet and I did. Oh boy. So, so again, these are not, these are not certainly an exhaustive list of topics. And these may change in all of these categories based on plan works like. Committee that would be focused on, you know, the social, emotional and mental health needs of our students coming back from the extended closure. But not, not just for our students, but also for our staff to understand what those needs are. And again, you know, working with the other subcommittee, perhaps identifying resources that are available in-house and then resources that we'd be able to access from outside as well. And then a safety group which, which would focus on, you know, the typical, I should think about safety. You know, develop social distance protocols, you know, review. You know, our local state health officials and of course the CDC. I will say that a lot of work has already been done around the whole PPE issue. And we're really, we're really, in my opinion, ahead of the curve there. We know that that will be, will be part of any reopening. So, so we're, we are in pretty good shape there. So again, this is kind of a broad, this is a broad overview. What I would like to do, what I intend to do as a follow-up to this is sometime Monday afternoon, and I'm waiting, I want to wait until after the, after DESI actually releases their plan. So we know what is, is being presented. I plan to send a letter to families, updating them on, informing them of the broad, you know, the broad guidelines that DESI has put out. And provide them with information about the planning process in developing and then finalizing our own reopening plan. And then invite parents who may have an interest or may be skilled in one of the broad areas that we just talked about. And invite them to join our planning process and would ask them to submit their names to me. And my hope is we would spend, you know, a good part of the beginning to mid-week and putting together the school reopening committee and starting to identify appropriate staff for the various subcommittees. As I indicated before, John and I had an opportunity to talk through this. I shared the written document with him just a little while ago. And so this provides a structure for us, once we see what the DESI plan is to go forward. And as I indicated before, some of the structure of this may be adjusted again, based on what we see for DESI. So I'll, I will leave it at that. I know you probably have questions and comments.
Thanks, Bill. Sarah, I believe you had your hand raised?
Yes, I was just wondering, I wanted to check in and see how procurement was going for the PPE. Have you hit any roadblocks with that? Do you foresee that being a problem for procurement?
So I had a little problem, Sarah, getting all of that. But in terms of PPE procurement, there has been, there, there has been an internal committee that Todd has been working with, Todd, Michelle, Diana McMahon, our nurse leader, working with some town staff. So we've developed a very comprehensive list. We also, in addition to that, have been working with DESI. DESI has set up a state buying contract for various PPE supplies. So it was a deadline, it was a deadline for tomorrow to submit to DESI all of our needs that we projected in our requests, along with, you know, the quantities, et cetera. And Todd actually submitted that earlier today. And we'll have an opportunity to either buy some of the equipment through the state purchasing process, or if we can find, if we find better pricing for some of the equipment, which, which I think we may very well, because we've already started working with vendors, then, you know, we'll have an option to, to either use our own vendors or we can use, go through the state process. We can choose. So, right, Michelle, we can pick and choose?
Yes, we can.
So as I indicated earlier, I think we're really in, we're in good shape around PPE and even, you know, custodial disinfecting and supplies and materials as well.
Great, that's good news, Bill. Does anybody else have any questions? So I appreciate this, this update. You know, it's a really thorough plan. You know, I know we chatted a little bit about it last week and the way that you presented it is, is really helpful. I think it's exactly, you know, kind of what you had put out to us last week. And I'm really glad that John had a chance to sort of go over it and, and be on board with it as well. Obviously, that's important right now.
I'm really happy that you looked at what Rhode Island is doing. My understanding is it's going, their plan, their planning process is going very well. And it's very comprehensive. So I'm very happy to see that you're, you're using that as the guiding framework here.
David, did you want to say something?
I just wanted to, right, thank Bill for putting together that summary document that can carry forward over the summer during the transition with all the work that's been gone on and just memorializing everything. And, and, you know, right up until the last week, pulling this together because, you know, this process is constantly changing with the recommendations from DESI and everything that we have going on. And I think the work will continue over the summer and it's a good framework for, for the district to have.
Absolutely.
Now, Bill, one quick question on the teacher input and the staff input. Will that need to have a stipend associated with it over the summer? Because there's going to be a tremendous amount of work that gets done over the summer, I think.
So Joan and I will be talking about that. Sorry, Joan. We, we definitely need to discuss the parameters around participation.
Any other questions or comments for Bill? I appreciate the update, Bill. You know, I think obviously everyone's sort of waiting for DESI to weigh in. And then that'll be, you know, that'll be the, the start line. So, but this is a, this is such a great place for us to just kind of be ready, waiting, set to go when we can go. So it's great.
Thanks.
All right, that moves us to the student fees update.
Just so very quickly, this is really a verbal report. So earlier prior to school closure, you did vote to adjust the all-day K fees, the pre-K tuition fee. And then typically during this time, well, hopefully earlier, you just didn't have a chance to talk about student activity fees, school lunch prices, et cetera. My recommendation, strong recommendation, given the current circumstances, the current financial circumstances, that we hold the, the activity fees, that was increased last year, the student activity fee. And that we hold stu, school lunches as well. You know, interestingly enough, through the middle of March, Todd had been experiencing some increased participation at that point over last year. And I know he was very much looking forward to perhaps having a robust spring. He certainly had a robust spring, but it was very different than what he thought it would be. So, so we do not have a recommendation to adjust those fees. And I think it makes sense, given, you know, the current circumstances. And we, we did not build the budget based on any increased fees in those two areas.
Thanks, Bill. That's helpful. And I think it's helpful for the public to know that those fees are staying stable as well. All right, that will move us into the financial part. So I will deal with the schedule of bills first. Everybody had that in their packet. And with the invoices and everything, can I get a motion to approve the identified schedule of bills totaling $1,548,181 and 1 cent? Sarah Fox moved.
Oh, second.
Again, second. Anybody have any questions on any of those?
I had two quick questions. I saw that there was a refund to parents for senior projects. Is this something that we've been getting, is this something that would happen no matter what? Or is that, is that due to, because of COVID? It was a very nominal amount and I was just more curious.
Yeah, I believe it was something that was not able to be completed because of the closure.
Okay. And then my question, I had to take notes because otherwise I forget. There's a structural CLP review. I'm assuming that that's included in the budget for the building project?
Yes.
And if we can just take a look at also where we are this year on track for our legal fees. I, I know at one point we'd gotten an update. Are we tracking over where we, where we estimated? And you don't have, this is, don't worry about giving me a answer right now. You can follow up. But I'm just curious. I know that we have had some increased outreach to them this year for contracts and things like that. Could you just give us an update on where we stand with all that?
Yeah, currently we are about $5,000 over budget in that line. I am anticipating, or I have an allowance for another up to $10,000 in that line. I do not think we'll use that full $10,000. But I am, I am counting on or at least reserving $115,000 for that line at this point for this year.
Very interesting that you have that like this. I sprung that on you and you had the answer.
Michelle, correct me if I'm wrong. That includes the billing through May.
Correct.
Expecting, well, we're, yes, we paid, that accounts for the May bill. So there's one more FY20 bill that would be for activity in June.
Correct.
Right. So, yeah, I agree with Michelle's projection. I think that that is certainly, will certainly be enough to cover June.
All right, any other questions on that? Okay, so we have a motion and it's seconded. I'll call for a roll call. Emily Barron?
Yes.
Sarah Gold, yes. Sarah Fox?
Yes.
David Harris?
Yes.
And Megan Taylor?
Yes.
All right, thanks, everyone. Motion carries five to zero. All right, that moves us on to the FY20 monthly report. Bill or Michelle?
Michelle is going to provide you with an update.
That's me. Since we did a full written report last meeting, which was just two weeks ago. But what a fun-packed two weeks it's been, very busy. So just giving you a verbal update, last meeting, we were projecting a surplus of a roughly about $425,000. As of today, I actually updated the projection yesterday and included today's payroll. And we are actually at $424,000. So we're right in that. So we're right in that ballpark still. It does give us some allowances for a few accounts that we know that are going over. And it looks like we have paid all of our final school year payrolls. So the remainder of the payrolls will be just our 52-week employees. So that's pretty easy, easy to project at this point. And it looks like we are in good shape. And as for that surplus of 425,000, we are planning on prepaying tuition in the amount of $200,000, which will decrease our budget needs for next year, which has been the plan with the town. And we are also working with the town to use some of that additional surplus towards our capital needs for next year. So, and then anything additional to that will be turned back to the town.
And, and all of that, of course, as discussed at the June 10th meeting.
Correct.
Approved by the committee.
Sarah Fox, you've got your hand up.
So any additional payouts that will be due to any of the retirees? I know we had a few retirees in the last couple of weeks for, for time owed to them, vacation time or whatever. Is that incorporated in that final number for our school year employees? Or will that be one additional, will that be additional?
Yep. No, because all of the retirees were either teachers or support staff, they do not get vacation time, they only get school vacations. So they don't get vacation days per se. We do not pay out any sick time or personal days. So therefore, there is no payout per se. If they gave us an advance notice, one year or two years or three years, then that would be, that would have been built in with their recurring payroll.
Yeah, that, I saw that that's, that's always been carried in the budget, which is nice.
Yes. So, yes, so there is no additional payouts for any of these retirees.
Great. Any additional questions for Michelle on this one? All right. Thank you, Michelle. Good news. Bill, that then takes us on to our FY21 budget vote. Did you want to, or anybody from the subcommittee fill, fill everybody in? Any, any, any other news from this past week?
I'm happy to, very quickly, I provided the committee with a memo regarding the FY21 budget vote. I made a few comments in terms of the process that we went through. The, the budget that we're asking you to approve tonight of $41,521,000 remains the same as that presented at the public hearing on June 8th. That was updated on June 10th, but simply by informing you of a, another late retirement, which will result in a $30,000 salary savings. But we, we took that savings and allocate, reallocated it to the COVID-19 unanticipated, unknown cost line. So, so that line is now funded at 165,699. So everything has remained the same. The liaison, the liaison group met last Friday, reviewed the capital plan that, that the school committee reviewed and approved on June 10th. And and did we, I've lost track of the meetings we've had. But that was reviewed last night with the FinCom. I think the school committee members were there. So, so you're, you're aware of that. I included information about that in the packet. So that's where we're at. I do want to commend the school committee for your work on this budget this year. It certainly has been a bit of a, an extended process, which is very unusual, but in the end, I think has served the school district and the town and our school community well, quite honestly. I think it's a, a budget that, that will fairly meet our needs for next year with some, with some additions. Doesn't meet all of the needs, it does not. No budget that we could have prepared for this year could do that. There has been talk now for more than a year, probably more than that, of a potential override. That day is coming, in my opinion, certainly for the school budget. It is coming down the road. But the good news there is, in my, again, in my opinion, with the new administration coming on and plans to develop a new long-term vision for the schools, that will, will most certainly identify outstanding needs and wants, will provide a strong, strong rationale for, you know, for an override process, which is very important. So I'm happy to, I'm very happy where the budget is ending up. And I think the district will be in very good shape for FY21.
Great, thank you, Bill. All right, so I will ask for a motion to approve the FY21 school operating budget of $41,521,000.
So moved.
Megan moved?
Seconded.
Sarah, second? Does anybody else have anything to say about that?
Just a quick question, Bill and Michelle. When will we start pre-buying the items that we need to shift to cover the capital items in our budget? Has that started?
It has not started yet. I actually am hoping to touch base with Jason Silver in the next couple of workdays and just double check with him to see if nothing has changed in terms of how we're going to handle the additional capital needs that we're not able to spend this year. So I just wanted a whole, whole game plan before we actually make those.
Okay.
We anticipate procuring, Sarah, we do anticipate procuring the Go Math piece and the FosScience kits with purchase orders next week.
Yes.
I had one more thought, which I'll talk to you about tomorrow, so to not drag this meeting out. We are looking for more one-time expenditures to kind of, so we can get a, and equalize it. So reach out to me tomorrow, because I'll probably forget. And I have, I, I thought of something else that may
Okay, will do.
Thanks, Sarah.
Sounds good.
All right, anybody else with anything to say on the budget?
Well, I, I'd just like to, we talked a little bit about this last night, but I'd like to thank Megan and Sarah for the work that was done as liaisons for the budget. And Bill and Michelle, I mean, Michelle came in here in November, was handed over systems that are inefficient. She's working to improve the efficiency of those budget systems and, you know, has just done everything that we expected you would do, Michelle, when you came on board. So that's been great. But also, you know, just, it's been a, it's been a really recognizing COVID-19. Pre-COVID-19, I think we were in a good place. But then when COVID-19 came out, just how everybody came together, FinCom, Jason Silva, and everybody on this committee. And then as Bill has described the process, it's been, he couldn't have done this budget without the members of his administrative staff and top-down working together to develop the budget. So it's just been a really top-down collaborative process. Thanks to everyone. And I, I'm glad we're in agreement here and we can move forward. And it, it does present some challenges that hopefully we can, we can overcome in future budget years. So thanks, everybody. It's been a great year, as far as the work and effort that's gone into that.
Thanks, David.
Can I just add something, Sarah?
Absolutely.
I know I've said it in every meeting that we've had around the budget, but thank you, Bill and Michelle and your teams. This is one more reason, Bill, why we're going to miss you so much. But all the work you've put into this budget, not only to get us through this year, but so that it's in a state that we can continue and hopefully, you know, manage in a much better and transparent way. So just thank you again.
Thanks, Megan. All right, well, without further ado, I will call for a roll call. Sarah Gold, yes. Sarah Fox?
Yes.
Megan Taylor?
Yes.
David Harris? David, you want to unmute?
Yeah, yes.
And Emily Barron?
Yes.
All right, great. That motion carries five to zero and we have a passed budget. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Michelle. All right, so that moves us on to school committee discussion items. And so, David, I will let you take it away for the building project update.
So in, in reverse order, last evening, the rock crushing equipment was, was moved off-site. And that was a couple of weeks ahead of schedule. And for those of you who have a chance to drive by the site, I'm calling it Mount Bell. There's a enormous pile of crushed rock that will be used on-site. And so that work is done and they did a really good job being considerate of the neighbors. And then there is additional rock that won't be crushed, that's just being moved off of the site. Additionally, we learned on Wednesday that the post-blast inspections, which is not required, but we thought it would be prudent to do, started last week, last weekend. And post-b, post-blast inspections were done on Saturday and Sunday at houses. And those are continuing to, you know, close the loop and, and be done with that. And we're real excited about that work being completed. And there's just a lot of site prep and site work that's continuing right now. And, you know, it's a, it's a busy site. Ground improvements are some of the major, is some of the major work that's going on down in the Lower Bell area, which will be the anchor for most of the classrooms. There's some equipment that came in there. So those ground improvements are, are taking place. So they will be able to start with the, the concrete work and the, and the superstructure work in the coming weeks. And then last Thursday, we did meet with the planning board. And by a vote of four to one, they approved the, the change related to the, the color of brick. So all of the paperwork and everything related to the color of the brick is, been submitted and is, and is moving forward. And that's pretty much where we're at. And we will have a building committee meeting a week from this evening.
Great.
David, do you know when the formal decision was filed? I know that it was a Monday or Tuesday. It hadn't been.
So from, from what I, from what I understand, Sarah, so the formal decision, you know, just in communicating with Becky, there was just a little lapse in, in some emails. But from what I understand with Becky, that the formal decision was filed by Tuesday. And looking at my calendar, I think that makes us still on track for Monday, Monday, July 6th. So all of that paperwork was submitted and Becky did communicate that.
Okay. And that's when the appeals process ends?
It is. Yep.
All right. Thanks, David. Thanks, Sarah. Okay, so that moves us forward into our summer meeting dates. We have to have a little bit of a discussion around that and kind of planning. Usually how that takes place is, you know, in, in normal years, it's kind of a, a day-long retreat-style open meeting, where we usually have our, our MASC rep come in and do some type of an education piece. And then we work with the central admin team and, and discuss things. We set our subcommittees and kind of just do, do a bunch of, of work in that, in that vein. Obviously, the summer is a little tougher. So, you know, obviously, we don't know exactly what it's going to bring and what the, as we sort of walk through the summer, what we can expect as far as being able to meet in groups, being able to meet indoors for a certain amount of time. You know, we always have to be cognizant of the fact that these are, even though they're retreat-style meetings, these are open meetings, so the public can attend. So we sort of have to keep that in mind, too. So I'm wondering if anybody has had any thoughts on that at this point? Megan, I'll, I'll let you go then. Sarah, I saw your hand, too.
Yeah, I, um, I reached out. Sorry.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
I'm having technical difficulties tonight. But I did reach out to Dorothy this week just to kind of get a feel for, you know, what she's seeing in other districts and any guidance that she could offer us. And one thing just to, for us to consider, especially if we're going to do any training from, you know, from Dorothy, for example, on strategic planning. She said, you know, if we're going to be doing them virtually, she would recommend doing smaller chunks. So for example, training, she wouldn't recommend being any more than an hour and a half, maybe. So then you can have some time to talk about it afterwards. But she did definitely recommend, for doing it virtually, to break it down into, you know, smaller chunks where we can really focus on specific topics.
Sarah?
So I know that last year we had multiple retreats. And I, I see that probably happening again. I think the idea of doing something virtually for a five-to-six-hour period straight is probably, especially where four of the five of us have small children, probably unreal, very unrealistic that we can be in our own homes and not be interrupted for that long of a period of time. I wonder, and again, this may not be possible at all. I wonder, is there a way that we could have it almost outdoors? You know, I know we're having, we're talking about having meetings outdoors. That definitely lowers the risk. We can be spread out a little more. I'd be willing to give that a shot. I, I don't know. I, I'm willing to get creative. I think if we can find a way to have a chunk of time physically together in a safe environment, like I said, outdoors if possible, I think that would be good for the training piece. I think there's something to be said for having that long meeting, that continuity in getting stuff done. But I don't know that that format of meeting would be successful via the virtual world.
Okay. Yeah, I agree. I agree with a lot of what you said, Sarah. Bill, do you have any thoughts on this? You know, have you had any other types of experiences in, in other years with school committees?
Other than you're going to be golfing and you don't care?
You are still muted, Bill. Nope. Bill, you're muted. There you go.
So clearly, this discussion is good to kind of understand some parameters of how people are thinking. In terms of setting some dates for the, for those kind of workshops and work sessions, I think having the discussion about how they might be conducted, you know, you might be able to do a combination. You know, I do agree with Sarah in terms of if there's any way that the group can physically come together for a work session. You know, that's generally, it's generally a smaller group. The public certainly is welcome to attend those. But generally, the public understands that the work sessions are for the school committee and, and some staff, you know, social distancing. I think you'll know more about that over the next two weeks of how that may work out. One thing I would do now, if I were you, I would set a meeting date, a school committee meeting date for that week of July 6th. Perhaps, you know, Tuesday or Wednesday, because I think that would be an opportune time to get an update on how the reopening process is going. You know, it may only have been a few days. But, you know, to hear some thinking from the new administration on that, or maybe later in the week, that may be better now that I'm thinking about it. But, but I would, you know, I would, I would suggest you think about doing that. And then, you know, by polling, you can come up with And then, you know, by polling, you can come up with some dates for workshops, et cetera. But some of that may be determined by, you know, the process or the planning process for reopening. You know, if you can try to, you know, if you can try and do what you normally do in the summer. I know the circumstances are difficult, but it would be nice to try to, you know, get some of that back. That can't be done, you know, and perhaps it's a combination of, you know, an hour and a half here, you know, maybe a lengthier session if you can come together. But, you know, again, I think the health metrics that the state has been using, you know, will guide you in that, I think, too.
Oh, no, that is helpful, actually. That's really helpful, because I think the idea of having that, of tonight, setting a date for that first full week of July makes a lot of sense. John will be here. We'll be able to really sort of wrap in a good way of what direction we're headed in. Obviously, the dusty stuff will be out by then. So, we'll have, we'll be able to come together and chat about that officially. So, that makes a lot of sense. And then, maybe at that point, obviously, each week, we get further into our reopening phases. Gives us a little bit more information about next steps and what we can and cannot do. So, I think that if the rest of the committee agrees, I'm going to propose that we pick a date, maybe either like Wednesday or Thursday of the first week. So, that would be the eighth or ninth of July, and then sort of go from there. And when we have that meeting, obviously, we'll come and have, if anybody's going away this summer, any of that type of thing. So that, so that we can coordinate for what we're going to do moving forward. And the focus of that first meeting probably being reentry, where that's at, all of those plans. And then, looking at what we're going to do for the rest of the summer.
I think that makes sense.
Okay. So, does anybody have a preference over the Wednesday or the Thursday that week, the eighth or the ninth? Sarah?
Do you see that being a day meeting or an afternoon or an evening? Just.
Absolutely. Well, I mean, that's up to the committee. What do you guys think? I see that being a shorter meeting, preferably. You know, like a two-hour meeting is what I have in my head. You know, again, everybody else, feel free to weigh in.
Would it, and again, if this doesn't work for people, let me know. I'm just thinking, juggling kids and spouses' work schedules. I don't know about anybody else. I'm not having babysitters in the house now or for a long time. If it's possible, I don't know. David, are you physically working at work or are you remote right now?
I, it's changing by the week. And so, I'll probably be ramping up a little bit more. But I am at work. But I can make myself, I'm at work three out of five days of the week, so I can make myself available, though. Kind of aside, I'll take some.
Would that Wednesday at like four o'clock, can I say four o'clock? So, it's still light if we decided we did something outside, if that does work. But that, you know, people have the workday and we still have, we still have, you know, a couple hours. And then, I don't know, does that Wednesday, the eighth, at around 4:00 PM work for people?
Not to be totally selfish, but trying to not be available around dinnertime in my house is virtually impossible. Because we also are not having babysitters and my husband is working.
While I'm still here, I might as well continue to butt in.
Yeah, go ahead, Bill.
If you don't mind. I, I'm sure there will be considerable parent interest, you know, in understanding and hearing more about reopening. So, it probably makes sense that it's early evening, just because of that.
More like a six o'clock. And given that, maybe more on a Zoom call instead of an in-person for that.
Okay, so you're thinking that one would be Zoom and not in-person?
I think so.
Yeah.
Okay, then that doesn't matter. I was thinking it was going to be in-person, so that timing is fine. Yeah.
Okay. So, does anybody have a preference over six o'clock versus the seven, like our usual seven o'clock?
Let's just do it seven, then, so we keep it continuing and people aren't thrown for a loop. I'm so, I totally misunderstood. I thought we were doing it in person.
No, that's okay. We've bantered about on all of them. So.
Okay.
David, does that sound good for you?
Works for me.
Megan and Emily?
Yep.
All right, all right. So, we will plan on our. Yes, on our first meeting being Wednesday, July 8th at 7:00 PM, and it will be virtual.
Will that be a summer retreat? Will that be considered the summer retreat, part of the summer retreat?
I think so. Yeah. I mean.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. All right. And then we'll take it from there at that point, again, kind of seeing where the state guidelines are at. And that'll, you know, give John a little bit of time for us to work with him and sort of figure out what he would like to see happen over the summer with school committee and things that he would like on summer retreat plans. And then, Megan or myself will continue to work with Dorothy and figure out a time for her to come in. Because I do think, you know, mostly, everybody but David on this committee has not done a superintendent review as well. So, we'll have to get some education around that, too. So.
To me, is there, I mean, I think that will be one of the topics we want for the education piece. Is there a list of what, you know, she typically does? And would we be able to all kind of review and see if there's any, if there's a consensus of something that we all are kind of feeling you would like to learn more about or do?
I don't know if she's got that list, but I can certainly ask her for her thoughts and ideas. You know, I know Megan talked to her, but Megan talked to her kind of specifically about that strategic plan piece. So, I can absolutely ask Dorothy other things that she's talked about and what she might suggest, given where our district is at and, you know, who's on our, who's on our committee right now and all that good stuff. And then I can email that out to everybody.
Yeah. And one other thing just that she also mentioned, because we did talk about the strategic planning and the superintendent evaluation. And she recommended, you know, reaching out to MASs and having whoever John's coach will be to be involved in those conversations as well.
Great.
Has that been assigned yet?
No, not yet.
We still can't talk you into that?
I'm sorry?
We can't talk you into that?
Are you talking to me?
I think Bill's having audio issues all of a sudden. He can't hear anything.
Been through that. Yeah, it's, yeah, having two mentors is, well, it's just, it won't work. And I'm not part of that program. So, the mentor he gets will be very good. John and I have talked about this. I will be available for however many hours he needs by phone. However he wants to do that, I'll be available. I'm not going away. I'm not going, you know.
You're not losing all of our numbers?
No.
Well, thanks, Bill.
He's pulling Verizon right away and putting a block on.
All right. So, that sounds good. We're booked for Wednesday, the eighth, and we will take it from there. I'll let John know about that, obviously, as well. So, that moves us into closing business and new business. Bill, I know that you had spoken to me earlier that we've got one new business agenda item to discuss.
So, I just wanted to follow up on, I forget what meeting I came up at, but regarding the, you know, the lunch program that we've been providing. So, that is continuing through the end of June. Richard Keller, as you know, is, he's great. You know, he's done a fabulous job along with his staff, maintaining that service for our families who really need it. There's been some questions about the summer. And so, Michelle and Richard did some work on that. We estimate if we continue the service through the summer at about the same, approximately the same number of meal packages, students that we've been servicing for the last month or so, about 65, we estimate the cost to be about $2,700. So, we have one of our parents who's been in touch with us, Samantha Rosado. I see Samantha's on. She's graciously offered to do, to be a lead in doing some fundraising for covering the cost of that. And we very much appreciate that. So, we just need to have one more, one last conversation with Richard to double-check that. He'll have staff who are willing to, you know, to do that through the summer. Did he say yes, Michelle?
Yes, we have staff lined up if we want to move forward.
Terrific. So, we'd like to do that. It's been a tremendous service to our families who have needed it. And, you know, we can, we can, I'm sure that over the course of the summer, we can, we can, I'm very hopeful, we'll raise the funds to do that. So, again, I want to thank Samantha Rosado for volunteering to do that. And I don't think the committee needs to vote, but if, you know, you all indicate that you think that's a good idea and we're going, Richard, continue to do that, we'll make that happen.
Yeah. Thank you so much, Samantha. And please, you have my contact information. Please react to me with the fundraising effort and any help I can be with that. I know you, Samantha's always been an advocate for making sure no one, no one goes without something. You know, she's behind the little free pantry. And I thank you tremendously for everything you do for our families and.
Yes, thank you.
Absolutely, Samantha. Thank you so much. All right. So, it sounds like we're all in agreement that that's, go ahead with that. Great.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Bill, did you have anything else that you wanted to say?
Thank you, Sarah. Yeah. So, I just wanted to, I'm not going to prolong this meeting any longer than it needs to. But I did want to make a couple of comments. I very, very much appreciate, you know, the very kind and generous words that many people, those of you here tonight, have offered on my behalf. It really is appreciated. But I want to take this opportunity to thank the school committee. You gave me this opportunity last spring to come on board. And I'm very grateful that you did that. And I'm very grateful for that opportunity. I'm grateful that I've had the opportunity to work with all of you this year. And that includes Jen Schaffner. And I'd like to echo, you know, the sentiments that Sarah Fox had said earlier tonight and Katie Martin. And I certainly wish Jen well. I want to thank the staff. The thing that is, became very clear to me early on and remained so throughout the year is that, you know, the residents of Marblehead and in particular, the residents with family, with children who are going through our schools are very fortunate to have a really fine staff, a very fine staff. And, you know, that is really the most important asset that a school district can have is those individuals that, you know, are with students every single day. And they're terrific. And I want to thank you. I want to thank them for their support of me throughout the year as well. I want to thank the leadership team. Again, an outstanding group of leaders. They are dedicated and committed to not just the public school district, but students and the families in Marblehead. And they exhibit it in many different ways all the time. They're a terrific group. And I know they will be very supportive of Dr. Bucky as he takes the helm. I want to thank the central office administrative team. Michelle's been, you know, we've talked about Michelle a lot. She's just been an outstanding addition. And you have, you have a Michelle, outstanding leadership in the business office. The ship has been righted in terms of procedures, protocols, best practices, and that's a very good thing. I can't say enough about Eric Oxford. He is a tremendous leader. And he's done, just in this short year as an interim, he's provided, he's provided a real sense of stability, a real sense of professionalism. And just exudes, his confidence carries through to the staff in the student services department. So, we look for great things to continue for Eric. I want to thank John Moretti. You know, John took on a couple of different roles, actually more. Those are his official roles. Took on many, many other roles informally. John's always been a tremendous leader. I was very fortunate. John and I have been colleagues and friends for decades. And I knew that he'd be able to come in and help right away. And he was a tremendous help as well. You know, we spent a lot of time this year on budget and financial matters. That was really important. I do hope, and I think we made some strides in some other areas as well. But in terms of the finance and budget, I want to thank Megan and Sarah Fox in particular for your leadership on the budget subcommittee. The process that we utilized as a district, as a team, working collaboratively and cooperatively with the town side, other departments in town, was truly, was truly a great experience. And I think resulted, and hopefully, I'm sure the town meeting will approve our budget, but it has resulted in a very good product for FY '21. And I hope I'm not missing anybody. I appreciate the very cordial and professional and very friendly relationship that I've had with the teachers' association. Joe Miller's an outstanding leader of that group. And, you know, is very knowledgeable and even had, she's terrific. I'll miss working with Joe. And then the central office support staff, Lisa and Mary and Kathy and Diane, Peg, Selena, Pam, Katie, the tech team. Everybody's just been great. So, I just want to, again, express my gratitude for the opportunity and coming into the position. My hope, my goal was that by the end of my tenure, I could leave the district in just a little better shape at least than when it was when I arrived. I hope I can be able to accomplish that. And, you know, stop and say hello over the next few days, well, the next, however many days. I'll be here through the 30th. And I've enjoyed the ride. It's been a, it's been a very, it's been a very different ride for all of us, but it's been terrific. I really appreciate it. So, thank you all very much. And I will see you.
Thank you, Bill. Well, this might actually be our shortest meeting of the entire year as well. So, well done. We finally did that. Yeah. Does anybody have anything else under new business? Because that leads us to the end of our meeting.
Oh, I'm crying over here. Bill, don't leave us.
Don't get over it. Thanks, everyone.
All right. Thank you, everyone. And with that, I will adjourn us at 8:41 PM.
Okay. Good night.
Night.
Thank you. Good night.